Let's try this again. Welcome to the April 23rd, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting here at the School Service Center. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bladner?
Here.
Mr. Jerpy?
Here.
Ms. Kovit?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Mr. Hamblin?
Here. Mr. Paulson, would you lead us in the pledge one last time?
You're not going to do it next time. To apply the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kovit. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Jerpy?
Here. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Bladner?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Mr. Hamblin?
Yes. We have two information topics tonight. Our first topic is a Vision 2026 update on college and career readiness. Dr. Schuler?
Yes, I'm going to hand it right over to Mrs. Murphy, who's going to lead this update. Just a reminder, this is one of the items you set this year on your work plan, were a few specific strategies related to this portion of your strategic plan. So Mrs. Murphy is going to give you an update on where that work sits.
All right. Good evening. I was certainly excited to provide the board and community with this update tonight. Our team has been very busy working on this specific area this year, and so I feel like I have a lot of great things to share this evening. So here are the four main topics that I'm going to be covering. So I'm going to be talking about college and career readiness, our career pathways work. Something new I'm introducing tonight is our career connected learning and the future plans that we have on the docket for next year. So five guiding questions for the presentation, starting with what does it mean to be college and career ready? So college readiness, really when we talk about this, is being prepared to enroll and successfully complete entry level credit bearing academic programs at a two or four-year post-secondary school. We want our students to have the knowledge and skills to transition successfully. As a reminder to the board, your dashboard has metrics that define proficiency for ELA and math, and we really use these as the college-ready criteria. And so these were defined by the Illinois State Board of Education. And so to meet the proficiency in ELA or math, they can do this through a course or through an exam score. And so as a reminder, those are the specific criteria that laid out by ISB, but we also use that on your dashboard. And when we talk about college readiness, we acknowledge that being able to enter into that credit-bearing coursework is step one. That's like the first hurdle. But we also want our students to be able to persevere and be successful in post-secondary education. And this is why we also have a metric on your dashboard for advanced coursework. And so research shows that students who earn at least this year better in an advanced course during high school develop the skills to persevere. And so this is a metric that we obviously watch closely as well. And some celebrations here I wanted to highlight. First of all, you see the graph on the left shows that over time, we've really seen a nice steady increase in the number of students earning a SE better in an advanced course. And when we talk about that, we're talking about AP and dual credit. Just a reminder, those are the courses that we're tracking there. And then you're going to see, too, the number of courses that we currently offer for AP and for dual credit. And I also added a column for next year as well because a reminder, the board approved another AP course that's going to be on the books next year, and two more dual-credit courses. So that, those options have really expanded. Another piece of college readiness that is new this year is the Accelerated Placement Act. As the board knows, this is a policy that we have looked at a few times. This is new. This went into action for our students this year. And so the intent of this, this came from the State Board of Education, and so the intent of this is, is to widen the gate for more students to have access to advanced coursework and earlier. And so ISB gave the guidance if a student met or exceeded in ELA or math, they would be automatically enrolled in the next most rigorous course. And so for our freshmen, sophomore, and juniors, this generally means an A-level course. Once you're a junior or senior, this could be an AP or dual-credit course. So our high schools, we've been talking about this a lot. We've been monitoring student results. We have a semester's worth of results to look at, and our high school team actually presented to our EC12 leadership team on this recently. And so far, we're seeing great success with this. It has had minimal impact on students' GPAs. Our freshman-on-track metric hasn't seen, you know, any difficulty with that. We're still successful in that area. And we're also seeing more students from our Black and Hispanic subgroups in those advanced-level courses, especially earlier on, freshman, sophomore year. So so far, this is, our high school teams are talking about this being a success.
Do we have a sense for either in numbers or percentages, how many students have been bumped up as a result of that shift in policy?
The high school has those actual numbers. I don't have them with me, but they do, just to give you a little sense of what this feels like scale-wise, they equate it with, like, I'm going to give hypothetical numbers here. Like, we may have in the past had, you know, eight sections of I and five sections of A. We're literally flip-flopping those section numbers now. So with many more sections at A.
Can you clarify what that freshman-on-track comment means? It says where state rec was higher than teacher recommendation. What does that mean?
Yes. Good question. So the state says that students should be automatically enrolled in the next most rigorous course if they had a meets or exceeds data point. So our teachers also provided recommendations for families. So our families got a letter that said, hey, these are the courses your students will be automatically enrolled in. These are the courses that our teachers team feels like would be a good fit, but you certainly can be in these accelerated classes. So they really analyzed that group of students specifically to see, hey, of the students that went into a higher course, how did they do? And as a reminder, the freshman-on-track metric is, you know, they're earning the credits in those core classes without, with one failure only.
And one follow-up on that, if they're automatically enrolled, if for some reason a student does not want to be in that next level class, can they opt to?
Yes. So we set up a procedure where the parents could notify the school that they did not want to be in that course. And we did have a large number of students let, you know, the schools know that they didn't want to be enrolled in that course. So that presented some scheduling difficulties for our teams, all the way up to, you know, the start of the year. We also had some students who started the year in that course, but then its semester made a switch. But these are minor cases. The big overall picture is that our teams wanted to send was this has been successful for kids.
Okay, good. I just know that some kids, maybe they already have a very heavy load and they want one class.
It's a great point. We certainly wanted to send the message, too, that while you're entitled to be in four AP courses, you also need to think about your extracurriculars,
Yeah, exactly.
your interest.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Melissa, the, some of these numbers still don't make sense to me. Where the state recommendation was higher than the teacher recommendation, higher in terms of what?
The next most rigorous course. So very practically, the state would say, you have the criteria to be in the A-level English course, but our teachers are saying, maybe I-level English is a better fit for you.
So then what do we do? Do we put them in what the state recommends?
We automatically enroll them in what the state recommends unless a family reaches out and lets us know that they would like to be in the other course.
And what you're telling us here is that they do all right based on the state recommendation?
Correct.
So what does that say about our teachers not recommending them?
I think there's always lots of factors to consider, right? Like, you know, I think it's, I think that, you know, teachers have information about their students, their potential work habits, things like that, that they're considering as well. And so I think overall that this policy is helping kids access more rigorous courses, and we're seeing some success from that.
So maybe our teachers are being a little bit too cautious? Is that how I might interpret this? A little too conservative?
I think you, I think you can draw conclusions that there are cases where we may be making a recommendation when the students could be successful in the higher-level courses.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That was college readiness. Let's move into career readiness. And so when we talk about career readiness, we want students absolutely to have that strong academic foundation, but we want them also to have employability skills, job-specific skills that are connected to a career pathway. So that takes us to, like, talking specifically about what a career pathway is. So the board has seen this slide before. I use this regularly with our teacher teams, too, to quickly explain what a career pathway is, because a career pathway is pretty comprehensive, and there's a lot to it. So the ultimate goal is the red column. And the red column means that a student can earn a, on their transcripts, they can earn recognition that they got a college and career endorsement. But they have to do everything in the dark blue columns to earn that. So they have to have career-connected learning experiences. We're going to spend time on that later. They have to participate in a sequence of courses connected to a career pathway. They need to have at least six hours of early college coursework, and then they have to have work-based learning experiences, and that has to be 60 hours. The two dark, like lighter blue columns are not a requirement of the state to earn that endorsement, but they're things that we consider as part of a career pathway, which is an industry credential or co-curriculars that are connected to that pathway experience. So your career pathway endorsements also sits on your dashboard. That's new. We added that this year. And so in 2023, we had 19 seniors that earned that career, a college and career pathway endorsement. In last year, we had 30. I anticipate that we'll have a good number again this next year. Those two that are from, those two groups are all from the education pathway. We're going to talk about later on that we're going to have students earning that from different pathways this year. So let's talk now about our priority pathways. So in your green folders, there is a document, I actually linked it into the presentation, but I had a hard copy for all of you. Should be the first, this copy right here that says endorsement area and related career clusters. It's a two-column document. So these are the seven endorsement areas that ISB has identified. And within those seven endorsement areas, there's multiple career pathways. I put the little District 200, you know, emblem there by the ones that we are prioritizing developing out. And I say prioritizing developing certain ones out because this is comprehensive work, and it's a big lift to get a total pathway developed. There's a lot to it. So you can see, we actually have at least one pathway in almost every one of the seven areas. We do not have something in the agricultural pathway or the IT pathway. And I just want to acknowledge a few reasons why. So the agriculture pathway, we don't have a whole lot of courses in that area to begin with. So we really prioritize developing pathways where we had a sequence of courses already in place. It seemed like the first logical step. And then IT, you may remember, we did identify that as a priority pathway. Mr. Spencer did a lot of work on that, actually, and we were feeling pretty good about that. But we do have a lot of challenges in the staffing area with the IT pathway. And so it's certainly not off the table, but it has not been fully developed there for us. But I'm going to walk through the ones that we have prioritized and give you an update on the work that we have there. So communications is the first one, and I'm walking through in order of this, like, table, too. So communications is for the arts and communications endorsement. You can see the sequence of courses. And remember, when we talk about sequence of courses in District 200, we are also linking the middle school experience here. And that's what makes District 200 unique in their pathways work, that we're able to do that and be really intentional and starting to develop kids' interest in these pathways. And so you can see, we called out speech here for the communications pathway, the seventh grade electives course. We, earliest college coursework, we have broadcast media one and two. We're going to talk about that a little more in a second. And our work-based learning experiences. And then we have some co-curriculars. So I have a couple of images here because this year, this has been a really, a big work project for us, is finding internship opportunities for our students outside of the school day. This is really the first pathway that we've developed, where we've found partners, and we have kids going into the workplace because of that relationship. So, and you will also recognize these names because we've had the opportunity to recognize these groups at our board meetings. So we have the Acxiom Media Group. And so the students here have had the opportunity to use the video and editing equipment. And then we have Green Tree Studios. So the interns assisted in filming, sound, and editing the local. And then the City of Warrenville, they were partnering there to develop some images for the Park District. And then the City of Wheaton, that student, there's, if you actually click on the link or the image, we're not going to do it tonight, but if you want to later, you can listen to Roger talk about his experience in, at the City of Wheaton and how he produced a Halloween safety video. So we're certainly really thankful for these real-world experiences for our students to apply what they're learning in broadcast media two, or sorry, broadcast media one, they're applying into that real-world setting. So we're very thankful for these business partners and these experiences. Entrepreneurship is the next priority pathway. And so you can see the series of courses. You also approved social media marketing. That's going to be a dual-credit course next year. The capstone experience here is business incubator, and all of the work-based learning occurs into the, in the business incubator course. So we actually applied for an endorsement for this pathway with the state board, and we received the approval for that. So we should have more students on that list for ISB next year, not just from the education pathway, but we anticipate we'll have kids from this entrepreneur pathway, too. Marketing is like a branch of the same, kind of the same track here, where this is specific to the two social media courses specifically. So the big work project will be this summer, we'll be identifying business partners for the marketing pathway. So we've started that work. Culinary is another priority pathway for us, and this is where we get that opportunity to partner with Technology Center of DuPage. And we have the professional cooking and baking capstone experience that sits there. Our students can get up to six dual-credit hours, and they could have the opportunity for an internship with this. This, obviously, we have a great sequence of courses at our high schools, but also our middle schools will be having the introduction to culinary arts that will be rolling out with our renovation work that we're doing. So you know about the education pathway. I just thought I would highlight, we're going to be approaching about our 200 students taking that course at the end of this year. So we're real close to that number 200. So we're excited about that. Nursing. So this is another area that we submitted to the state board to have approval for a transcript endorsement, and we got that approval. So our students that do go to the TCD nursing program and participate in the clinical hours with TCD and have taken the, have met the other requirements could be eligible to receive that endorsement as well. And then engineering is our most underdeveloped pathway. We're just getting started with this. As the board recalls, you approved the new introduction to, or the Engineering Essentials course that will start next year at our two high schools. And so we also have some introductory experiences at the middle school that go along with this. And I listed out there, too, the future course options that our high schools are considering and thinking about bringing on. So there's more work to do here, but this is a pathway that we've prioritized in development.
Melissa, can you just give us a brief overview of the pathways? Where does student interest lie? Like, what are more pathways, I'm assuming, have more interest of students than others?
I really appreciate you asking that question because, so every year, our eighth-grade students take a career interest inventory. We're actually going to expand that. I'm going to talk about that a little further on. And over the last few years, we've looked at the student interest to determine where we should spend our time. And this actually brings me to a good point I needed to make earlier with the IT pathway, that we know that there's lots of opportunities in the job field for that, but we actually had limited student interest in that. So that was another kind of pause point for us for a little while, too, and shifting our work focus in another way. But absolutely, that career interest inventory that our students are taking is helpful for us.
And then one other question I wanted to ask on the IT career pathway, that if staffing is an issue in fully developing the pathway, one, I'm curious if you could comment on what particular challenges you're seeing? And then, two, what other ways are we, if not a full pathway, still creating opportunities to kind of like spark that interest for those students that do have that?
Yeah. I think, I think that's a space where we can devote some more time and energy we have into thinking through. While we may not be able to develop a full pathway here, like, are there, are there courses or two? We do have computer science that we offer at our high schools that gives kids some experience. But, you know, Mr. Spencer, could I kind of call on you with the staffing, like, difficulties we have there?
Yes. I would also say that in the IT space, where there is interest, is usually still computer programming. It's like software-based, so that's easier to get off the ground. However, where we really see the jobs exploding is more on the hardware and network side of things. So I think when it comes to student interest, it might be there's just not enough exposure to students. They know that these kind of careers exist. As far as the credentialing goes, there's just not many applicants that have the necessary CTE, computer endorsement. And so there's two different types of endorsements. There's one on that software side, and there's also a separate endorsement if it's on the hardware networking side. So it's just trying to find teachers with that credential.
Last question for now. Is there an opportunity within the district for existing teachers who want that endorsement to get that?
Yeah, there, we actually had a teacher who's since moved on to do other things, but he, he was a teacher that went back to actually COD to go ahead and get the courses necessary to sit for that credential test.
I also think, like, this is an area where I sit on the DAOS Board of Directors, and I think there's a real opportunity to have a conversation with DAOS. Like, is this an area we want to explore collectively, where we can consider staffing for our 14 districts here opposed to 14 districts trying to find all their own people? So not saying that's a guarantee, but I think it's a worthy conversation for the, for DAOS to have. Okay. Next is career connected learning?
Sorry, I had a couple of questions on this topic as well. So some of the pathways outline the role that TCD plays. I'm wondering if we have looked at the role that COD could play and whether ISB would honor that. So for instance, looking at the culinary tract, you know, there may be some of our coursework that someone could take at COD. What is the thought process there?
We have the same thought process, actually. Mr. Smith does a lot of our work in investigating what it takes to be a teacher who's offering a dual-credit course in our buildings that COD approves. And actually, on our list is investigation of culinary at both of our high schools. So you and I are thinking exactly the same way.
Then my other question goes back to something you presented, I think about a year ago, when we were talking about the education pathway. And, you know, obviously, somebody's choice of a career or the college they attend may or may not be motivated by economics, but it was very compelling that by following the career pathway, the cost to ultimately get the degree and the certifications to become a teacher could be greatly reduced versus what I think most families anticipate. Are we able, with any of these other pathways, to outline a path to a very low-cost introduction to a career field?
That's a good, that's something great for us to think about, how to, like, apply that same logic, if we can apply that same logic to these other pathways. That would be good marketing.
Yeah. And even for the, the education one, while it was, you know, mentioned in the context of a board meeting, I haven't seen, and maybe it's out there, but, you know, information for students or parents that really show that. And I think it would really resonate, because for someone who says, wow, to go into a career like teaching is just out of reach for me financially, I think seeing those numbers could really be a game changer.
I think you're thinking ahead to something that I'm going to talk about here in a moment. So it's a good teaser.
I have a question, too. What about students who are interested in trades that may not need college, whether it's going right into the workforce or going to a trade school? Because I know there's a lot, there's a lot of information that I'm hearing that there's a shortage there. And so how do we support those? And I know these are mostly focused on, right, further education.
Yeah. So we really rely on our partner with TCD in that space, because as a reminder, we have multiple career opportunities for kids to explore in the trades there. So we have mechanics and welding are a couple that come to mind for me in that space. And so, and we, as a reminder to the board, you, you support that well and invest in that. And we have about 200 students between our two buildings that are scheduled to go to TCD next year and, as well.
And how about how they're supported in the building? Like, if, you know, just some kids just aren't suited to go to college, right?
Yeah.
So if, if, somebody says they may, maybe they want to go be a pipefitter, do you think they are encouraged along those lines? Or do you think they're more encouraged to consider secondary or, you know, going to college?
I think I can weave that into this next part.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So our, a lot of the work we've been doing this year has been called about career-connected learning. And so this is part of that requirement of having a career pathway. And we didn't want this to just be a definition. We wanted to really put into practice, what do we think career-connected learning is? And that's where we did our work this year. First of all, just when we think about the value of career-connected learning, it's, it's these five things. We want our kids to be exposed to the world of work. We want them to understand career fields. We want them to strengthen their academic learning. We want them to enhance their professionalism. We want them to enhance their professional and career track. And maybe, to your point, Mr. Long, provide a temporary or permanent job. We want that to also be something that our students sees as a possibility. And so to this year, we had a committee of 34 members. Our student ambassadors actually have participated in this committee as well. So you can see the breakdown of folks that were on this committee. Actually, lots of people sitting around this table were a part of that. Mrs. Berry was a part of that, Mr. Spencer, Mr. Biskin was a part of it as well, and multiple staff from middle school and high school. And even, we had DAOS, TCD representation and ROE representation. And really, what our team was doing was we were working to define what career-connected learning is in our school district. We spent time looking at exemplar districts. We looked at best practice and research, and we learned from our ambassadors. And so what we walked away with was, it's also in your folders, it's a document that's titled "The Guiding Principles for Program Development of Career-Connected Learning", so it's a front and back page. And so what this team did is they said, listen, the reality is, there aren't standards out there for this. Most of the other curriculum work I do, I go to the ISB documents, I go to the National Council of Teachers of, you know, English teachers, and I see the guidance out there. Well, there's actually not guidance in terms of, like, standards. So our team really came together and said, we want to put together, like, what do we believe career-connected learning to be? And our team, over those meetings, developed these seven priority areas. And so the first one is comprehensive career education and readiness. Like, this is our main goal. We want our students to experience this through their 6-12 education. We wanted our, this to be based on student needs and feedback. So to your point, Julie, our ambassadors spent a lot of time talking to the student body and determining what we should consider. And so I'm actually going to linger on this one a little bit longer here, because I feel like this was the biggest outcome of the whole committee. Our ambassadors said that we have to find, we have to develop more internships, because we have a lot of kids out there, finding them on their own. Like, they have a friend's dad who does something and helps them out. They said they really would like the school district to help develop more, which we feel like we're starting that work for sure. Our ambassadors also told us that it's really powerful if it's connected to the curriculum. They talked about having guest speakers in classes where that made a really big difference for their learning. They also talked a lot about how our upperclassmen are thinking about this a lot. And so this is really relevant to them, and they, that this is really important work. The other things that they identified was, that we identified was prioritizing the portrait of a graduate skills. Our committee had a really long conversation about, if we want students to go into these internship opportunities, we really think they need to be strong communicators, collaborators, problem solvers, have resilience. We talked about making sure that we are prioritizing developing those skills for our students going into these internships. Teacher involvement and professional development are, we really talked about the importance of our staff understanding the world of work in the industries to promote them to our students, and the important role our teachers play in helping kids with course development. Number five goes to your point, Mr. Jersey. We recognize we need to have a more intentional promotion and marketing of our pathways to make sure that our students and our families understand these opportunities. And then, strong community and partner, community and business partners. We're going to talk about some ideas with that at the end as well. And then dedicated staffing and program infrastructure. As we scale this work, we know we need to continue to consider staffing and program infrastructure. So just in summary, like, this is really, lays out what our school district and this committee of teachers really spent time saying, like, this is the program we want, and this is what we're going to use as the roadmap for the development of these experiences for our kids. The second document that our team came to is the fancy, pretty one that's in your packet that looks like this. This is our framework. So the committee also gave input into, at what grade levels are we going to be very intentional in the work that we're doing? And so, Mr. Long, this really goes to the question you asked. Like, we want our students to be exposed to these opportunities and have knowledge of them, and we have to explicitly provide these, not by chance, right? So the way this is laid out is the top four boxes are really that continuum of learning about career education, where it goes from awareness, exploration, preparation, and training. To underneath there, our team said, hey, there's things we want all students to experience, whether they're in sixth grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. We want them to learn about career fields within their courses. We want low-commitment opportunities. We want field trips. We want guest speakers in the classroom. We want our students to do the interest inventory, but not just in eighth grade. Our team said they should do it every year. And we want them to have support in developing that four-year plan with their career interest in mind. And then you can see that there were things we specified by grade level bands. Where I just call out a few things, like specifically the Technology Center of DuPage. So, Mr. Long, our team talked long and hard about, even at middle school, we want our kids to see those opportunities, to know those are possibilities for them in their future. We want to have a career day. We want job shadowing experiences. So I think there's a lot of energy around all of these opportunities, and our team was really thoughtful in contributing and putting this together. So what's our next steps? Well, we, our team has identified five next steps. We want to continue to develop those complete career pathways. So marketing internship opportunities is a priority for us, and the engineering pathway. We want comprehensive career exploration and readiness, so we talked about this, the electives. We're doing curriculum work there, so it's a real natural place for us to start thinking about those, you know, explicitly teaching about careers. We've also talked about the portrait of a graduate skill. So really thinking about how we develop what that success looks like for those areas that we've identified as part of our portrait of a graduate. Teacher involvement and professional development. We want to make sure all of our staff understands what we have developed. And so that's going to be part of our professional learning plan next year. And then we really identified a learning opportunity for our middle school staff and our high school staff to partner. We identified that our middle school staff could have a better understanding of the opportunities in high school. They have, they have surface-level understanding, but for them to have really good, strong conversations with our students, they need to have a deeper understanding. So we're going to strengthen that partnership in the knowledge there. And then, two, lastly, SchoolLinks is a program, our college and career readiness platform that we purchased two years ago. We have been utilizing it. Our kids use it for course registration, but there's a lot more possibilities there, so we want to expand that opportunity. So the last thing I really wanted to speak to was the Advisory Council that we're developing. And so this is something I'm really looking forward to, is finding folks in our community that can help advise us. Like, what do we need to consider when we're exposing our students to these careers? What, can you put us in connection with other business partners? Or would folks in your industry be interested in being guest speakers for us, et cetera? Just scratching the surface there, but we're really looking forward to getting that group together to help partner with us on the work that we've really laid out here. Okay, so just as a wrap-up, we, I presented to you tonight what college and career readiness is by our definition and the successes we're seeing in data, our career pathways, and the work we've done to advance those and where we're prioritizing, our new career-connected learning framework and principles, and then what we've laid out for future plans. Is there anything you feel like needs clarification or further explanation?
Yeah, two questions. And just wanted to say, I absolutely love this, and especially this, where it really lays it out across time. And I want to be careful with this question, because I know I already asked a question about economics, and I think education is about so much more than earning potential. However, while I think a lot of our juniors and seniors, as I talk to them, know what they want to study, I'm always surprised when I ask them, okay, what do you want to do then as a job or a career after that? And, you know, it gets a little murkier, and in some cases, they don't have an understanding for the level of education they're going to need to achieve in that field in order to gain full employment and earn a living wage. And there's some discussion of this at the DuPage regional meeting as well.
Yes, yes.
And so I'm curious as to whether there's an opportunity for us to build in here, something that really clarifies that for a student of, it's great that you want to study engineering. Here's the fields that could lead to. You know, here's the level of education you probably need to get to. Here's what you can earn in that. And oh, by the way, here's then, based on the cost of college, what the payback period looks like. Because, again, for some families, they may be in a privileged position where that payback period doesn't matter.
Right.
For others, that may be a critical attribute. And so I just think there's maybe an opportunity for kind of that career readiness and financial education here.
I agree. And when Mr. Wallace was speaking about that at the, you know, the dinner we attended, what came to my mind with that was, we have that opportunity with the middle school electives, where we have those year-long programs, and we also have the financial literacy course that we're developing out. And my mind went to, like, we could probably put some of that content in there. So.
I think, I think some of that is available actually through SchoolLinks as well. There are some amazing tools inside of SchoolLinks that's separate from, like, mass education for everybody that allows an individual student to really explore that pathway and then find some kind of right-fit colleges or post-secondary that would align.
Yeah, so maybe that falls more into the, kind of the marketing piece of making students, and probably especially families, aware of that, because a lot of students may have their heart set on something, I want to be an influencer. You know, the families may be the ones who have the interest in whether their child's going to actually be able to make a living doing that. The other question also-
Eric, before you go, can I just comment on that point? I want to go to the other side of that spectrum. The kids who are kind of just passively seeking or searching or just, you know, trying to get through the week and haven't really thought, you know, haven't thought that far down the road, and, you know, connecting to them. And I think what the work Chris does with our, you know, social-emotional and connectedness to students, how it's all just related, right? And so I think that's really a critical part of our strategy and our portrait of a graduate, right? And all the things that we do to advance that strategy. So it's not, it's, you're right, but there's also this other group that we have to find a way to connect to, you know, find a way to drive an interest, right? Turn a light bulb on, or whatever it might be. That's spark. And our teachers are the key to that, right? That relationship, that connection. I appreciate your point.
And to follow up on Eric's, I feel a lot of feedback here. Eric's point to economics, do we have an ability to have a closer relationship with COD to where our students could access on-campus classes there, or be part of the three-plus-one program and get some of that done in high school?
At this point in time, that hasn't been something that we've explored deeply.
And can you maybe just revisit the pathway we have for education now? I remember what Eric is speaking to, that a student could start it here and continue with COD, and there was a very specific path to where it was such a reasonable cost to have that degree in the end, that four-year degree. Is that, can you just kind of speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, the two-plus-two-plus-one experience is really what we've defined, like, that's the definition there with the education pathway, where they can, you know, earn the two years in high school, get the two years at COD, and then continue on to the one year.
So is it pretty structured, that if a student identifies that they want to do that, they connect, they make that connection with COD here while they're in district? Or is it, they're sort of guided after?
They don't have to make the connection necessarily with COD. And actually, so Angel, I'm going to step back to the question I think you just asked. I think as we continue to expand those dual-credit opportunities, especially dual-credit opportunities that take care of those, like, foundational transferable classes, college composition, all those, those are going to apply, right? So I think in almost any circumstance, as you think then about transitioning a student to COD, that is giving them a leg up on that first year. If not all of the first year, it's certainly giving them probably the equivalent easily of a semester of COD kind of already in the bank that is going to apply. So even the education piece, like, that's not, you don't have to sign up for that program, but the idea behind that program with COD is you accumulate the equivalent of a year of credit through our dual-credit opportunities in high school. You go there, you take care of years two and three through their intro-to-education program, and then year four, typically in the teacher track, you're back to student teaching anyway. So COD has partnered with another institution that basically is the degree conferring institution, but you're never really going to that school, because that last year, you're doing your student teaching, your clinical experience, where you're largely back in-house, right, with a district. So I think, it's just two aspects, I think, what you were asking about, right? One is making students aware of what those three-plus-one, you know, one-plus-two-plus-one opportunities are, I think, can help kids kind of see that linkage. And then, two, is, so dual-credit, there's a couple of different opportunities for dual-credit. Obviously, one are the classes that our teachers teach inside of our school. Two are classes that can actually be done, like correspondence, a kid goes there. I think there is some opportunity to perhaps look at how we expand opportunities where kids can perhaps go to COD, right, as a part of the experience, but that's going to kind of fall within the, I guess, call it the correspondence course bucket that we have.
I'm just, I'm just going to add on here. Part of this, I think, as well, is making students aware of the options at COD. And COD has done a really incredible job of partnering with our dual-credit teachers and asking our teachers to bring their students out to COD. They get a student ID from COD. They have the opportunity to utilize those facilities. They speak with individuals at COD to really learn about, like, hey, this is a great experience for you. You're already doing one of our courses, or maybe more. You know, come study here, and this is what the experience is like.
So that's offered to students in our district who are currently in a dual-credit course?
Yeah, I know specifically that our students that are in the college composition course have taken advantage of that opportunity. And I heard rave reviews from our instructors about that, our Wheaton-Mooreville South and North teachers. And not a dual-credit course, but credit-bearing entry into credit-bearing coursework, Transitional English that we're offering this year. Our students went to COD and heard all about the options there, and then even had other post-secondary institutions there to hear about the, you know, you could do two years here, and here's the options in the future. And Craig Lawrence, who's teaching that course, described it to me as kids saw doors opening for themselves. Like, he said, it's like super powerful, going to COD campus.
And I would agree, absolutely.
For those field trips.
Thank you. I think there's, there's so much involved in creating these connections, and it's very time-consuming, so I appreciate that so much. My next question, I'm sorry, Eric, you wanted to go ahead, so I'll come back after.
Yeah, I did have one more question for you, but first, I want to react a little bit to Rob's Yoda-like wisdom a couple minutes ago. So, you know, as I was thinking about your comment about the role of our great educators in, like, helping students find their passion or ignite their spark, I guess- I guess as I look at this, I feel like there's such an opportunity for students to maybe have a passion, but not be able to turn it into a career. Or conversely, and maybe worse, students who go into a field just for the money that they have no passion for and they, they don't enjoy life. I think this provides us as a, a district, an opportunity to connect the two. How can we help someone discover their passion and identify a career path where they can turn that into a living wage? So I appreciate your emphasis on the find the passion piece. My last question for you, also something coming out of the, the DuPage Regional Meeting. You know, you mentioned, I think, on your very first slide that we're not just preparing students to get into post-secondary education, but to succeed in it. There was some discussion of the difficulty in assessing the rate at which our students actually graduate from two and four-year universities and the need to subscribe to the National Clearinghouse data. Is that something we are doing or have contemplated doing?
So Mr. Smith actually did a webinar with National Clearinghouse and has all the information. And that's actually on our next agenda to talk about what that could look like. He, walking by his office last week, he said, oh, I'm really looking forward to talking to you about it. This is going to be really cool. So that's all I know so far, but we've investigated it.
Perfect, thank you.
So my last question on this topic. So I, I feel like each area is, so is there so much work entailed? But I am curious with the nursing, that nursing component chosen. I, I kind of think there might be some value in expanding health sciences, like perhaps partnering with a local hospital and offering and connecting students with volunteer opportunities there because it can be for a student to connect themselves is difficult, so we could make those connections. Because there's, nursing is amazing and wonderful and very admirable, but there are more.
Yeah, I, I think to your point, I just went back to this description on the Advisory Council. I can like switch the language from nursing to say health science, honestly, to cast a broader net.
I think there's such a broad net and that's where, again, it's a lot of work, you know, but a lot to offer, so thank you.
Yeah.
It really appreciated all of the work on career pathways and the training for the county that was mentioned. I think that was a really lightbulb moment for me of helping me understand the why of all of this work and I think it's so important. And just a word of encouragement is after that training, I came home and we had the COD summer catalog. And I mean, they have so much good programming that this work is a really heavy lift for the district that if there are ways through our just communication channels, we can take the work that they already do and just get our kids exposure. I mean, there were classes for, you know, being a crime scene investigator in the stock market.
That's a good point.
That, I think that's a little bit of low-hanging fruit if we can just.
We could promote that, yes. It's a great point.
All right, first off, I love this. We've come out so long and just, or so far in just a couple of years. My question really revolves around the role of the high school counselors versus the high school teachers. It seems to me that, you know, in terms of the promotion of the opportunities, the connections to businesses, you know, being the pusher of the effort, are we putting too much focus on the teachers? And it seems to me that counselors are maybe better aligned with, with this kind of role. They're more closely connected to the student's overall future. And I'm just wondering if that's something we've thought about. And I know, and noticed in the work plan, we talked about professional involvement for staff, teacher involvement, we don't, we don't mention counselors. So, open-ended question.
Yeah, and that's really probably me semantics. Like when I say teachers, I probably should have also said counselors to go along with that. Or just staff in general, I probably should have used that term. But I think our committee really felt like it was like a whole staff effort. And we certainly recognized, like, when we, when we started this work, I personally thought a lot about it as the counselors. And I thought my work group was really going to be the counselors. And my thinking has evolved since then. I think they play a really, really important role in those one-on-one conversations and shaping the path for kids and those like, but our team really felt like it's, we're all in, like, we're all a part of this work and helping to support kids with opportunities. So that's, those are the conversations we had.
And I wonder if in the future, we may need to consider expanding the number of counselors that we have because I feel the counselors have so many students that to have those one-on-one conversations, to offer all these opportunities for students to be aware, takes time and.
I actually want to just throw something out there. Really where the expansion that our staff is thinking about in the future is really folks at our high school that might be able to coordinate internships. That's really where our staff was leaning towards, our high school staff. If we potentially could consider, you know, works budget-wise and things like that, we were really thinking like an internship coordinator at both of our high schools who can plan these experiences and get those business partners and follow up with kids at the job sites and make sure they're, you know, ready with those skills. We really felt like that was really the next step in, you know, staffing that we, we needed to think about.
That makes sense because putting that on a counselor as well, there's.
Yeah.
I think you would need with all this that is being implemented and if we really hope to like have more students participate.
Especially right now, like to get those internship opportunities, like all of those pictures I showed you, the folks that did that work were like Ian Smith and, you know, that's great, but as we scale, it'll take some more hands.
As we scale, is that something that may be more so than a district activity? Is there something that could be done at the regional level? Because presumably we're going to place people in internships, not just within Wheaton, but county-wide and every school would be looking at the same.
And that's why I'm really glad now that my position, you guys have approved my position to be a part of the Deos Board of Directors because those are exactly the conversations that we are having as a director group is what role do we play as a county in our 14 districts in trying to partner together on that?
I think it's ideally going to happen at multiple levels, right? You're going to have to have kind of a very localized effort. And then probably for certain areas, based on interest, position and availability, there's going to need to be some regional scope and perhaps even some kind of statewide scope in, in some of. We do, you know, Mr. Smith has formed a partnership with a couple of different entities that are already working on a regional level that have helped to provide some internship exposure in some engineering experiences. So I think actually at our, our next board meeting, that might be one of the internship, or the community partners we bring to recognize is just an organization that's actually provided some of that on a, on a regional level. So I, I think all of the above, right, tied to it. Melissa, can you just one, one more piece connected to all of this? So I think Rob did, did a nice job of really connecting another strand in our strategic plan, right? All the SEL work with his college career pathways work, or third, third arm to that. Could you just kind of comment on or connect the learning acceleration work and the role that it plays in kind of foundationally setting all this up?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I really think about like that learning acceleration, like really heavy in the K-8 space and making sure that our students have the academic readiness and the academic foundation to be successful when they enter into their coursework at the high school level and allows them to explore multiple opportunities as well, so.
We talk often too, that as, as you read, I think a lot of what Ken Wallace and those folks have done in terms of, of research, the rigor required to enter a college-level English course. And then compare that, Dave, to some of the opportunities you're talking about are students that are going into an apprenticeship program and are actually required to read really complex manuals to prepare for that. The reading level often in, in those kind of apprenticeship programs or even in military preparation is actually a lot of times identified at a higher lexicon level than, than a college-level course. So I think learning, we did use to always sort of think of this as these two distinct paths, right? You are either on this academic readiness path that's taking you to college or this career path that's taking you elsewhere. And while there are definitely clearly defined pathways, I actually think the, the non-negotiable is that learning acceleration work that has to be in place, right? You can't say, hey, I'm going this trade route, so I don't need to worry about reading. You actually need to worry about reading at probably even a more complex level. So I just, I, I appreciate this piece because again, I think actually all four major quadrants in your strategic plan, learning acceleration, the college career pathways, the SEL connectedness work, and then candidly, the staffing work is coming into play and kind of how this all fits around the ultimate outcome, which is that portrait of a graduate and success, so. Sorry, Brad.
No, that was actually the answer.
I was just thinking about another organization, Jeff's probably familiar with it, in DuPage County called Choose DuPage, that is kind of the economic development arm. And I know one of their missions and goals is workforce development. So I'm, you know, part of what they do, try to do is connect companies with potential workers. Might be an avenue, maybe that's already under discussion, Jeff's nodding like he already knows all about this.
I, I know about Choose DuPage. I mean, we haven't necessarily linked it directly to this, but I think you're right.
So that might be an interesting thing to look into because I know they're very business, businesses looking for workforce development employees, developing the skills. So there might be a little high school connection in there that could be explored.
I think the last little piece of this year, I think I shared with the board earlier, just to deeply, more deeply establish the relationship. I joined the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors this year as well. Not with an idea that that's necessarily me long-term, but I'd like to keep the district in that position long-term. Because again, connected to Choose DuPage, I just think that is the linkage to a lot of those community resources. So I think that's a valuable seat for District 200 to, to maintain. And it's something that we had for a while and we just haven't done as much with the Chamber of Commerce really recently, I think, as the, the pandemic sort of prioritized a, a different path of work for a little while. It's, it's, we've now come back to that as well, which I think will be helpful.
Jonathan, you got a point?
Yes, I just had some concerns about the risk of the kid that says, I really want to be a forest ranger and gets too far down that way and cuts off the ability to become a surgeon, perhaps. I think you're addressing that some of the basics need to happen for everybody. But with my limited experience to that age group, I have seen some kids that are really interested in something that takes a lot of energy, maybe being outside, and that may be good for a while, but not for a 50-year-old. And I, I think you're pointing that out.
All right, thank you. Our second topic tonight are communications and community engagement, the work plan update. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so Alyssa is going to take you through a few highlights off of her work plan for this year. And actually, Alyssa did a great job of teasing an element that actually is kind of part of a, of a broader advisory expansion that we're going to hit on with that, so Alyssa.
Thank you. Good evening. You know, I like to say one of my favorite parts of my role is that I get the opportunity to support all different departments within the district. So it was really nice that within Mrs. Murphy's presentation, some of the things that you're going to hear from me tonight do connect because that's what my work is about. It is connected to all of our different departments and it supports our staff, students and communities. So I hope you'll see that through this update. Okay, so tonight I am going to take you through how our, how we communicate with our stakeholders and how we engage our stakeholders and community partners. Again, I think you're going to see through this that both of these go hand-in-hand in a lot of different areas. So we'll begin with how do we communicate with our stakeholders? So at the building and district level, we maintain a regular communication or cadence with our stakeholders. And that is done through these main avenues listed on the screen. But I want to draw your attention to our district newsletter. When I came on board last January, we did identify that we communicate with board highlights from a district level, but there was some room to grow in how we communicate other happenings within the district with our community. So in March of 2024, we did launch the new district newsletter that is sent electronically every Thursday that we do not have a board meeting. So for example, we would not send it this week because we have board highlights going out tomorrow, but next week when we don't have a board meeting, we do send that newsletter. And the purpose of that is to communicate with our staff, our students, our parents and community. And we want to share the important information coming from the district, the work and the priority of the district, highlight what's happening in our classrooms and celebrate our schools, our staff and our students. So we've been doing that through that newsletter, which I think has been a great addition this last year. Outlined in our strategic plan was the, is a strategy related to a communications audit. So we kind of took some time to figure out how we wanted to conduct that. So this past summer with CISO Communications, we did conduct a district-level audit and that looked at our internal and external communications. And when we got that information from that audit, we analyzed it and we thought it was really helpful, but we wanted to get a more comprehensive look at what our communication looks like with our external, internal audiences at a, a building level as well. So in the board packet, there was a newsletter breakdown. So I've spent a lot of time this past year with our principals looking at how are they communicating with those internal and external audiences with your newsletters? So on that board packet was a breakdown of, with the internal, how many times are they getting a newsletter from the staff, the district and departments? And same with our parents. And so you'll see through that, that our staff and community member is getting a lot of information on a weekly and monthly basis. A lot of times they're getting a communication from the district on a weekly basis and from the school on a weekly basis as well. And while that's good, we want to make sure that that is consumable for them, that they are getting the information that they need. So with that in mind, next week or so, we will be launching a school newsletter survey that will go to parents. And this is going to look at, you know, are they happy with the content that is in these newsletters? Are they happy with the format? How about the frequency? Is it accessible? Can they translate it into a language that they need? And we will use the feedback from those audits and from those surveys to determine our priorities for next year. Another strategy outlined in that strategic plan relating to communication actually involves finding a two-way communication tool that actually myself and Mr. Spencer have worked very closely on together. So we realized there was a need, especially at the high school level, to have a tool where staff can communicate with students and staff can communicate with families in a safe way that is SOPA compliant. And so as we looked at a bunch of different tools that were available, Mr. Spencer and I were able to find that our existing website and mass notification provider actually has a tool called Rooms. So that will keep all of our communication needs within one place. And that allows us to have a two-way communication platform integrated into our current app. It syncs with our student information system and it offers instant translation services. So if I needed to communicate with a family that only speaks Spanish, I can send them something in English and it goes directly to them in Spanish in real time. So we have set a pilot, a year-long pilot that we started this summer with our high school athletics and activities. And so they've been using this and we are actually in the middle of a survey with our staff, students and parents that utilize that tool to see how they felt about it. Is it a viable tool moving forward? And in that same timeframe, we've been working with our multilingual department and special education to learn more about this platform and if this would be a tool that they would find useful. And as we get all of this feedback, we'll determine what does it look like moving forward into the next school year? Okay, so I can't talk about our regular communication needs without talking about any crisis or emergency communication needs within the district. They are equally as important and should be talked about. So we actually talked a lot about what's on this slide back last year in April when we did our school safety presentation. So you've heard a lot of this before, but I just wanted to, you know, point out that anytime there is a crisis or emergency that takes place, we want our families to know about that. But we also take a comprehensive approach to looking at communications and we do that through the lens of prepare. And we do that through the lens of understanding who is impacted by this and how are they going to be impacted? And where is that communication need? We don't want to, you know, over-communicate with groups that may not be involved. So we really try to follow that. So we really try to follow that Prepare model. And within that, we're always evaluating what that looks like. And we always get a lot of questions after a, you know, emergency situation that happens and says, hey, what are your protocols with this? What are your protocols with that? So we took a step back and we said, you know, we need to provide some resources for our community. And we, with the help of Dr. Slaggy and Mr. Biskin, we developed two new pages on our website, which are the CUSD Safety website and SEL website. And I will be sure to link those in our board highlights tomorrow for the community. But we really recommend that they look at that because it gives a great overview of our work within those two areas and kind of what they can expect anytime we are in a crisis or emergency situation. All right, with that in mind, it is always our top priority and goal to get, help our families be notified anytime there is an emergency as soon as we possibly can. Sometimes, given the severity of different situations, that can take a while because there's a lot of moving parts and we need to make sure that we have factual information. So there are times where communications will have to be vetted or reviewed by some or all of the people listed on this slide. Thing that I want to note about this is that, you know, anytime we do have that emergency that happens, we have a recap after the event and we look at what went well, how can we improve? And a lot of times it's how can we get that communication out quicker? So we have done a lot of work with our fabulous partners at the local law enforcement and our public information officers. So we've spent time figuring out, hey, how can we work together to make this review process quicker? And that work has really centered around making sure that we have a common process of when we need to communicate, how each of our entities are going to communicate, how we communicate with each other, making sure that we understand common language that both of our entities are okay with, because law enforcement may have different regulations that they have to use and that we also have to follow if there's an investigation. So we've really tried to work together to make that process a little bit smoother. Any questions on any of that before I move on?
Just for two things you presented. One, just so feedback on Rooms. I've heard from a number of families that while in general for academic use, Rooms is working very well. You mentioned the exploration relative to like clubs, athletics, et cetera. The gap that a number of folks have called out is the inability for parent originating communications, because in a lot of those athletics or co-curriculars, parents are heavily involved in supporting the groups and it doesn't provide a good avenue for them to have communications with each other and staff all in one place. The only other thing, you know, very tactical, emergency communications I think are always going to be tough balancing, speed of communication, completeness, et cetera. But I think common language isn't just for maybe how we work with other government agencies. I think the communications to the community, sometimes we fall into the trap of using maybe jargon. And the practical example I'll give is almost every time there has been a secure and teach communication, I think we need to define in the communication what that means because I don't think the average parent, especially in the moment, understands the difference between a secure and teach, a lockdown, or some of the other terms that are thrown around.
I completely agree with you. We've had those conversations and we've started to incorporate that, and so much so that we have started putting together a document for our front office staff who may be answering phones in those situations to make sure they are fully knowledgeable on what those different protocols are, so that they can help those who maybe call and say, hey, I need more information. They can give them accurate information as to what's going on. And we are working with our principals to understand how to incorporate that into your communication.
Thank you for all the work you're doing in this space.
Thank you. Any other questions on this area before we move on? Great. Okay, so entering into the next question about how we engage our stakeholders and community partners. Again, you're going to see, there's going to be some overlap. It all goes hand in hand and we can't do what we do without the support of our community and our community partners. So this first slide is really, I tried to highlight any engagement opportunities that are based around CUSD 200 initiatives and groups. So you're going to see here, there is a lot. We really value the input, collaboration, and feedback with our staff, students, and community members. It takes all of us to be able to move forward and make improvements and come up with new ideas and initiatives. And while we have all of these opportunities, you can see there are a lot, there are times where we just don't have the space for everyone. And so we have, we're working on launching a new parent advisory group, which you will see right there on the right-hand side. So I know Mrs. Murphy alluded to that in her presentation, so you can see some of those here and we will be sharing more information on this with the community soon. But we did attach into the board highlight, or the board packet, more descriptions and kind of implementation timeline for you to review. But we really hope that this increases opportunities for our parents and community members to collaborate and help us to support the work of our district and our students.
Can I ask a question about those committees? The, so I know the special education one has already kicked off and is in progress. Is the bilingual one already in?
Yes, we've actually had that for a number of years.
Yeah, and then, so the other ones, career pathways, school, safety, and technology, are those three brand new? Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Schuler, I, I don't recall if I asked you this one-on-one or if the rest of the board was privy to it, but I know I'd had a concern of, you know, given competing priorities and capacity of, of the team, you know, were we going to be able to support this? Is it taking away from something else to activate all these committees? I thought there might be value in you sharing with the others in the community kind of what we discussed.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for asking it. So fair, I, I don't think so. So we, as we've thought about especially the three new ones, the career pathways, safety, and student wellness, and, and technology, one, we've kind of divided through this team. So the intent is not like CAC that all of us are at, at those meetings. So Chris and Matt are really taking the lead on the safety, student wellness. Melissa and her team are really taking the lead on the career pathways piece. Jason, and I'm guessing a lot of support from Melissa are taking the lead in the, the technology education piece, just based on, on focus. We set these up to meet quarterly versus monthly, like, like CAC is. And the last piece I just want to call out is that CAC has a lot more formality to it because it's authorized by board charter, so it complies with Open Meetings Act, all of those pieces. These are all intended to be administrative advisory committees and just doesn't mean that it's any different in terms of kind of how it guides input for improvement, but it just adjusts the function of it a little bit in that I think they will be a little less time-consuming to, to run. But, but we'll have to, to, to see candidly. We introduced, so not because it's not important, but just really based on timing, we've actually introduced these already to PTA council to make them aware, shared it with CAC to make CAC aware of it as well. And, and actually, as we introduced it to CAC at their last meeting, as we did so to say, hey, if you have any interest perhaps, because we clearly said to, to that group, the goal is not for you to also be on three of, of these groups, right? If you're on CAC, let that be your engagement opportunity. Save this opportunity for other families because our goal is to, to broaden the net and advance the topics. And we've actually had a couple of people from CAC that, that have reached out and said, hey, I'd rather step back from CAC and, and consider one of these, which I think is good as we're, we're considering that. I've shared with the board and I think we've shared publicly, right? It's good news. We have, I think we ended with 33 applications to CAC. As of right now, we've got five open seats on the, the committee. So for everybody, as we go through that process, that, that perhaps does not find an opportunity on CAC, we will certainly open these opportunities to make sure that they have an oppor, but, but again, back to your question, I think it will be manageable. We'll see, we'll give you an update as we, we move through next year.
Alyssa, I have a question on the district newsletters that you launched this year. I really appreciated them and thank you for taking that effort. I'm curious if we have any data on how the community has responded to that? Are they opening them at a greater rate than the board highlights or in past years? Any feedback you have on that?
Yeah, so I've actually tracked that every single time that it goes out. So I've been tracking that since March of 2024 and we have maintained about 65 to 75% open rate on the newsletter, which in my experience is very high. And I think that's a testament to how engaged our community is. We are very fortunate that they are so engaged and they want to be informed about what's happening within this district. And I would say that that is just slightly higher than what we are seeing with the board highlights.
What's, what is the, the number, roughly the number that that's going to? So each time that gets delivered, that, obviously, that's anybody that's in our system, but anybody who's kind of signed into that, about how many people is it going to?
Yeah, I would say it's going to about 15,000 to 20,000. So it is hitting all staff, high school students, our parents, and then any community members who have filled out the form on the website that say, hey, I want to receive that district newsletter. And there will actually be an update coming to the newsletter through our mass certification provider, where they will include just a self-enrollment option. So we will, may see those numbers even go up. Okay, so the last slide here, which is just as important to highlight, is our active involvement with a variety of community partners. And I want to take a moment to really highlight this because our partnership with them really supports our students. We could not do what we do without them. Just an example, our service clubs and our Student Excellence Foundation are integral in supporting our weekend food bags, the mobile pantries that we do every single month at Johnson and Village Brook. We could not do those two things without our partnerships with these groups. And we are very fortunate to have them and again, to have that engaged community that is so passionate about supporting our families and our students.
All right, board, any additional questions? All right, thank you.
I see the, the roll calls there, the neighborhood roll calls. I assume that's the police department?
Yeah, so roll calls, there was a little hiatus the last few years, but really it's a partnership with the local police departments and they host events within the community many times at our schools for the community to come out and learn about the safety efforts that they do and then also within our schools. So we will be bringing that back this summer. We are really excited about that. So there should be more information on that coming soon.
I've been thinking a lot lately, recognizing that pretty soon I'm going to move from the 30% to the 70% with no connection to the district. And so I'm thinking about the district newsletter. I know that, you know, parents, students, I'm really interested in, you know, part of what we have to do is promote and our brand and our successes and sell that within the community. I wondered if there's a kind of a segment of the district newsletter can be really targeted towards our businesses, parents, you know, parents whose kids might have graduated within the last five years, looking back at the database. Because in the end, you know, our, our community is as strong as our school district and the more we can promote the success, I think it would be an interesting kind of add to the communication, to really do something targeted, truly kind of a brand promotion, a sales piece in addition, you know, in addition to just saying what's going on. Something like that might be an interesting and fruitful, long-term thinking.
Yeah, I would say I agree with that and there's definitely work we can do there. And something else that we've been exploring for next year is looking at print newsletters. So doing, you know, maybe two a year, so that goes to those residents that maybe don't have students within the district. And within that, we can create those opportunities to help get them involved, get them informed, get them enrolled in what that newsletter looks like.
Could be a good career pathways opportunity for the marketing.
Like we said, it's always, it's connected in a lot of different ways.
There, there is on that and I guess as we're moving into budget cycle, we, we've really continued to carry that in the kind of the, the budget ask as we're moving into next year. We obviously did a fair number of print communications this year in the fall related to referendum communication and trying to clearly articulate that. And so that connection point, we just don't want to lose as we move out of that, right? One, we don't want the broader community only hearing from us when we are in a, in a referendum cycle. So we've looked at and kind of thought twice a year is probably a good cadence for a all district kind of mailed newsletter. And, and I think, Brad, to, to the point, that actually might be a better spot for, for some of that, right? To feature some community partners, to kind of have some, some advertisement, because I think that mailed focus that hits everybody's mailbox, you really want to anchor that a little bit different than I think the email piece weekly that's largely going to families immediately inside of District 200 right now.
You mentioned another thing there that I think is going to be super critical over the next couple of years is progress on the middle school projects. I think that's going to be super important, whether it's just a dashboard on our website or a special page, but actually hitting milestones and showing, showing the community that we're delivering on the promises and their, and their support. I think that's going to be critical.
Yeah, we actually did turn that website that we had for all the information for our referendum, that has turned into place that we will have updates regarding the work that is happening. And then again, kind of merging our two worlds together, something exciting that's happening is we will be welcoming on a student intern that will help follow those projects and help us capture that, so.
With regard to the broader community communications and kind of, you know, marketing the work we do, I would have assumed that the community would be interested in kind of, you know, very brass tacks, you know, what's going on? How is my tax money being used? I had the privilege of attending a joint annual conference, a couple of sessions though, that had a very different message, which was that in, you know, majority of districts, what they found has resonated is more of the storytelling, you know, what are the exciting things that maybe kids have achieved, whether it's in the classroom or outside of the classroom, things that just help the, the community to understand, you know, the, the great kids, the great educators within our district. And again, surprised me a little bit in that, you know, your area of expertise, but I just figured I'd, I'd mention that because it did not fit with my assumption of what the typical community member would want to see.
All right, thank you. Did you have a question, Angela?
No, I was just going to add, I also think maybe in, to consider in those biannual mailbox pieces, a solicitation to the community to, you know, be involved or offer opportunities to our students, because I think there's so many community members who want that, you know, whether retired or even active in business, if we can solicit that through that, reaching that broader group.
Yeah, and a lot of times I, you know, I think it's not that there's not a want to help, they just don't know how or what's available. So really communicating that is important, absolutely.
To that point, at the joint annual conference, I've really appreciated the feedback from school districts on how they also communicate to those stakeholders that don't have students of what we have to offer them. There are so many like fine arts productions that, you know, really provide value to the community and I think are great things to highlight for our students and community members.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. I'm going to introduce the public comment section of our agenda, so thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school district, and community. It's the board's practice to not directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and the information's explored. It is not our intention to signal a lack of interest and we appreciate your understanding. Depending upon the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspective. Tonight, we will not have to reduce the time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be committed, communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we all treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name, and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kullivitz will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I will respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time to attend the board meeting tonight and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district. We have one comment, and that is from Emily Walker. Probably want to just come up to the table and use the mic there. Awesome.
I timed it at three minutes and 40 seconds. Is that okay? Hi, I'm, I'm here tonight to talk about HB 2827, the homeschooling bill. Hi, I'm here tonight to talk about HB 2827, the homeschooling bill that's been in the news, and you might wonder why I'm talking to you all about a homeschooling bill, but let me explain. First of all, I want to tell you a little bit about my family. As a homeschooling family in District 200, we are actually huge fans of the district because we're a public school family as well. Our kids have attended Emerson, Weasbrooke, Monroe, Hubble, and Wheaton Warrenville South. We have a senior that's about to graduate from South, and he's headed to the University of Illinois' Granger School of Engineering. We've also homeschooled each of our six kids at various times, and our younger three kids are homeschooled now. We've been actually just so grateful to our district for a top-notch schooling experience that has been key to our parent-directed education efforts, as we've discerned what best serves our kid each year. HB 2827, the homeschooling bill, plans to add a significant administrative burden both to the public school staff and homeschool families. It requires each family to register annually with the principal of the local school. It requires each family to be ready to submit detailed curriculum for review, and guess who would be required to perform the curriculum review? The school district. According to this bill, if a parent fails to file their registration, truancy officers can follow up, and parents can face jail time. There are intrusive and restrictive policies in this bill regarding private schools as well. This bill would stretch thin current school administration and be a distraction from the district's core purpose, providing excellent education to the students in the schools. It is estimated that there are over 100,000 homeschoolers in Illinois, and so we would estimate that the district would need to monitor hundreds of families because of this bill. It's an unfunded administrative burden in the state that already has, according to the Illinois Policy Institute, the highest combined tax rate. This detracts from the mission to inspire, educate, and challenge, and support students that I know you all have. The homeschooling bill says that its goal is to reduce incidence of child abuse. No one wants child abuse, but forcing the public schools to become a supervisor for homeschool families is not the answer. Homeschooling kids are regularly exposed to mandated child abuse reporters just by living life. According to the Illinois DCFS, mandated reporters include medical personnel, like dentists, doctors, eye doctors, nurses, social services, crisis intervention personnel, education personnel, recreation or athletic facility personnel, childcare givers, law enforcement officers, any member of the clergy, and funeral home directors. In the past month alone, my homeschool kids have each been on sports teams, gone to medical appointments, homeschooled co-op a funeral, and to church. We even went on a tour of the Warrenville Fire Department last month, giving ourselves an opportunity to interact with more mandated reporters.
If you could wrap up real quick, we have to really be, we have to be really consistent.
Okay, I'm sorry. As you as a school board member consider so many important issues, I just ask you to consider weighing in with the state of Illinois to encourage them to abandon this overreaching homeschool bill, HB 2827. Thank you so much.
Thank you for taking the time.
If you'd like to leave the comments behind, we'd be happy to make a copy for each board member if you want them to read the whole thing.
Yeah, thank you. All right, board, we'll be moving into closed session tonight. So board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, Exemption 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, Part C, Part 1. Move by Ms. Kullivitz. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Kullivitz?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Bladner?
Yes.
Mr. Jersey?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Rublidge?
Yes.
Yes. The meeting's adjourned to closed session, and action is not expected following the closed session. We're adjourned, thank you.